Welcome to the Dougherty County Board of Commissioners meeting with your chairman, Christopher S. Cohelis. Your commissioners include, from District 1, Commissioner Ed Newsom; from District 2, Commissioner Victor Edwards; from District 3, Commissioner Clinton Johnson; from District 4, Commissioner Russell Gray; from District 5, Commissioner Gloria Gaines; and from District 6, Commissioner Anthony Jones. Also joining us is your county administrator, Michael McCoy; Assistant County Administrator, Scott Addison; County Clerk, Jawan Ware; and County Attorney, Spencer Lee. Thank you for joining your Dougherty County Commission meeting.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Call to order, the Dougherty County Commission Special Called Meeting for April 26, 2021. Note for the record that all commissioners are present in person, with the exception of Commissioner Johnson, who was on the phone. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, good morning. So, all are present and accounted for. Let's move on to minutes. Considered for action, the minutes of April 5th, regular meeting, April 12th, work session, and April 12th, special called meeting. Is there a motion? Any discussion? There being none, let's call the matter for a vote. There's a favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Delegations, this is where the Commission will hear comments on those items pertaining to Dougherty County, for which public hearing has not been held or scheduled. We ask everyone to be brief, to the point, and consider it of time for others. And Mr. Wright, Representative of Afram Tech, is present to update the Commission on the MBE program plan.
Our commission to Mr. Lee McCoy and to the public. This presentation is about empowerment, and we're going to give you a there is, in looking at the proposed model and instances of value shopping, it occurred to us, and we brought to this the previous commissions before, we need an oversight, a SLOs oversight committee. Now, see, when you value add, you cheapen things that maybe Architech and other professionals have suggested ought to be done, and putting their, take for that a sanitary pipe, I mean, putting in 30 inch when they, when they required there ought to be 96 inch or something like that. So, that oversight committee will meet quarterly, and the people will be paid. And we went back, and we're going to bring this to you in about a month, but we went back and reviewed all the amendments to the SLOs budget, where you're just shifting money around. That, that's too much, and it takes away from what you promised the public you were going to do. The public did not rely on six or seven people to just shuffle money as they chose. So, we need an oversight committee to do this. The other thing, now, we'll bring that back to you in a month, but we'll bring you back, all these revisions, and then we're looking for the minority business office to be open. That's what this presentation is about. And the Entrepreneurial Academy, we hope to bring that to you when we have our grand opening sometime in July. But let's give you just a little bit of basis on that. This academy will deal with issues in this community. For example, people ask me, so William, what happened with the bus terminal? Why did the bus terminal stop? Well, we got tired of going to the city and coming to the county board education. They tell us to get lost. So, they told us one time too many. So, when the bus terminal came, we went out there and investigated, and there was no minority business out there on the site. You, you see commissioners and to the public, every time you and I go and buy a gallon of gas, 60% of that gallon of gas go to foreign projects such as airports, such as the terminal, and ground transit, all ground transit, we prepaid for that. So, the money is just a return, just a return on our investment. Now, in the insulin case of the transportation academy, when we look out there, as well as the airport terminal, very few have made a minority business. So, we sent a legal complaint to the United States Department of Transportation, Secretary at that time, Elaine Chaff. And she stopped the project because we raised the issue of discrimination that was occurring, and it is continuing. Entrepreneurial Academy will deal with things, but it is best that no one make any money if minority businesses do not make any. If 80% of the community cannot get a return on investment that we have prepaid when we go on to buy gas, then I'd rather see no bus terminal. I'd rather not see any, what they call a general terminal. You know that terminal out there for people who have their own airplane? Do you know we're spending $8 million there, again, it's coming for that 50 cents of our air dollars that we pay when we buy a gallon of gas? And the guy, Mr. Matthews, lives over in Motry, and he's only paying the city something like $60,000 all the year to rent it. And we're paying $8 million. That kind of stuff has to stop. So, in your wildest dream, you've not seen a team like the one we put together to deal with these issues. So, we'll come back to that about a month. Let's get on with presentation on the next page. If you look at it, that would be page 1. It points out some of the issues. We sent this information to Senator Jari-Lita Schumer, Senator Wausau, Congressman Bishop, and Warren. So, they had information, they have responded to that. We're going to give you a copy of their response as we pointed out all these things, before that. But when we look at this file report, go to the next page. This file report pointed out what we already knew. At the end of the day, the report show, and look at who they considered to be the consortium. When you look at that, you got, it was presented by BBC Research House, them a car, we paid them a half billion dollars to tell us nothing. We already knew minority business were not getting anything. On page 21, if you look at that report detail, the numbers are much worse than that. Can you imagine you being 80% of the community, and you're getting 2 cents back out of $300 million? So, when we look at that, page, you look at page 21, you could go to Las Vegas and play the slot machine and get better return on your investment, when you could spend $300 million, and that's all you end up with. Now, let's go back to page 2, please. One of the things that pointed out on page 2 is the study purpose. And they just shout us a lot of bull. Got this study. You know, I mean, the contract they came up with, 3. All right, well, that's what the city did. And I kept telling Ms. Cut, Ms. Cut, you're all joking if you think this thing gonna work. Then, then the county tried, the first gave them $250,000, then the city. And the city gave them $150,000. You know what Chuck Shattle, he was the director of the EDI for Georgia Tech. We talked all and off, had nine employees, seven in Atlanta, they brought two down here, and they subcontracted, two attorneys. At the end of the day, Chuck Shattle said, William, it's not going to work because there are no requirements to do anything. And that's what's wrong with the program then, that's what's wrong with now, that's what we need to repair. So, you have everything in there. I would not waste your time or mine going to, you already know what it looks like. You cannot say you have a fair system. You cannot apply the CHS square, and at the end of the day, minority business, all minority business, not just the men and women, the mixed breeds and everything else, end up with $33. Well, $33.33, if we want to be accurate. But we've given you what's needed for a new program, and before anyone goes, well, the Supreme, well, the Supreme Court said that then, the program we proposed to you is not a race-based program. It's a program based on one's economic status, social and economic disadvantage. That's the same program in Adiran versus Pena that the federal government won with Randy Peck. See, Randy Peck was suing because he said, well, I would have got a contract with the minority business. The DOT program is based on economic disadvantage. That's what the program we gave you needs to be. Let me show you what, something that was crazy about what the city did before we stopped the transportation project. And that's what we'd be having a news conference about today. But when we look at the issue, and what the thing is, the city tried to repair the problem on the fly. It, it is a problem that can only be manifested if it is done appropriately and properly. We're proposing that you use either sweet 240 or 260 upstairs. We've already given you the funding formula for how it can be done. And you can take it for SLOs, you put a SLOs oversight committee in there. And you, you can roll on to page 21. One, one thing that, that the city did, Chair and Commission, Mr. McCoy, Mr. Lee, if you read that 52-page report that we filed a discrimination complaint on, the city of Albany waited 12 years on the American Indian to respond. And as I told Secretary Chaff, we were right down the street, and they wouldn't give us 12 seconds. So, you pay for your mistakes when, when you do not follow the law. They waited 12 years for the American Indian to say if there was anything archetypically significant on the site that was proposed. Told Ms. Hammond, told Mayor Hubbard, told Ms. Sudan, they said, get lost. Well, they said it one time too many. And there are consequences of that thing. Now, you know, Dougherty County get a lot of money. For example, the money on Ray and Spring. That's federal money. It's called about 24 CFR 13530, just like transportation is called by 49 CFR 26.145. The difference is, 24 CFR 13530 requires 70% of either disadvantage of minority business to be included on all projects. It does not mean you can bring someone here out of Chicago and New York, as the BBC study showed. Half of the contracts that the consortium was spinning were going to people out of New York and New Mexico. And that New York, New Mexico is just a metaphor for anywhere but Albany and Dougherty County. So, what we were doing, first of all, we didn't know what we were doing. That, that's one thing that study showed. And we told them that in the beginning, that's not how you do it. And you may not be aware of this, but the first minority business program that the city of Albany and Dougherty County School system had, your presenter was one who put that together. And several others, but we have to do a better job because, as we've seen there at the transportation hub, how in the world can you justify spending $8 million of money that we, the public, have paid and built somebody a palace out there for a ground terminal, and they only give $60,000 rent? We paying for it, and there are no minority business. We say, if minority business not get it, if people who live in the city of Albany do not get the money then, let's not see a terminal at all. Were we talking about the ground terminal? Were we talking about the transportation hub? So, you have information, you had it over the weekend, and we'll stop here with the chair and see if there are any question. But again, now, we're coming back in about a month, bringing update on this, and hopefully by that time, we will be able to tell you where the Entrepreneurial Academy is. And the final thing I would say is, we'll continue the PPP workshop. We're doing workshops tomorrow at the Oskay William Building, Micro Enterprise Center from 11 until 1:00, as well as Thursday. The reason for that is, the money is supposed, the PPP money through SBA is supposed to expire on May 31. So, it takes two weeks for your application to be forwarded to SBA, and SBA responding back to it, especially if you're trying to do double dip, that's you 2019 data as well as 2020 data. So, these may be the last two. If, if there's enough interest, we'll do the first Thursday, Tuesday, and Thursday in May. And then we'll stop at that point and begin to hold these workshops in the Entrepreneurial Academy. But for Tuesday the 27th and Thursday the 29th, they will be at the Micro Enterprise Center of the City of Albany, Oskay William Building, from 11:00 a.m. until 1:05. And we have helped a lot of people get money. As a matter of fact, that was, you, you don't know how bad the economy, the other lady came down there, she had, on her 10th floor, the Schedule C line 31, had $800 there. You know she wanted that? She wanted her $800. So, we did it. And just, just think about that. The economy's bad, so that's why you have to stop projects like that transportation terminal, when the money, we are prepaying for it, and it was supposed to come here, and the city did not follow the law on it. So, from now on, when we get people ready, in your wildest dream, this team we have now, they're ready to do something. Anything but margin, I'm, I'm not suggesting that margin or barcar, but we'll take the chain of command and go to the right federal authorities, and we'll stop the money from coming. City, the County Board of Education, you getting this kind of money and pretending you don't know what to do. We got people who know what to do. So, it's on you, Mr. Cohelis, see if there are any questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Wright. Commissioner Gaines?
Mr. Wright, good morning.
Good morning.
Could we have kept a program when we laid that one down back in 2009 or 10 or whatever we laid it down? A program that was not race-based, could we have kept that one? And can we create one today without further study? And I do have a follow-up question.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Gaines, as a matter of fact, the, the city of Augusta has asked me to present to them this coming Thursday on a similar issue. But what happened back in, in 2010, there were four county commissioners who just decided, based on that will, that we do not need a program, even though it's only yielding 2%. That was Cameron Senior, Yuolao, Jack Stone. And they just said, we do not need it. Now, if something is wrong, if you don't want 80% of African-American population to get 2%, but we could, we should have kept it. That study recommended that we revise what we had. It didn't, did not require the, the city or any of the consortium members, the county, to do anything but revise what we had. And we were economic-based, because that, that's what it was. Race neutral was the code word they used in their report, continue our end, continue our end. And instead of continue, the, the four members of the Dougherty County Commission just stopped, and then the rest of them, the city had two, water, gas, and light, and the city proper. And as you know, water, gas, and light is not a legal entity. It's just a joke, which suggests it is, but that's how I would treat it. And of course, the, the school system, I think the issue, Commissioner Gaines, all of the people who used to work for the SDV office contacted me six months ago, and they were ready to come here. And we have filed about that, that, the reports of what was going on. So, what we should have done then, and we just did not exercise what we did back on January the 5th for the election, you have to get rid of people who did not do it.
Mr. Wright, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it's a specific question. And that is, can we create a disadvantaged program now without further study?
Yes, ma'am. The long and short answer to that is, that's quick and sweet, because if you look at all the Supreme Court rulings, they have always indicated strict scrutiny if you're using something based on race. If you use other criteria such as disadvantageous or economic, then you're good to go, because you're not disadvantaging anyone. You're presupposing that people in certain ethnic groups are disadvantaged. And, and in the most cases, that is all you got to do is look at. The, the difference in the poverty in 80,000 citizens in the United States, in most cases, is going to be African-American.
Again, I'm sorry to interrupt, but are you saying that it is possible?
It is definitely possible.
To, to create, without a disparity state?
Exactly.
It is possible for these entities, who were previous members of the consortium, to create a disadvantaged program?
Yes, ma'am.
The, the answer is yes. Now, the, the, the follow-up question, Mr. Wright, is, since 2008 or 2010, when the program was laid down, have we experienced diminished capacity in, in Dougherty County? A diminished capacity to respond or to, to contracting needs or contracting requirements? If we were only getting 2% then, are we capable now, given that, you know, our, our contracting ability may have lessened since then? Have we, in your opinion, experienced diminished, diminished capacity to respond to requests for, or participation requests in the, in any contracting ability?
Well,
Or needs, rather?
Commissioner Gaines and, and commission and, and the public, as a frontality, we deal with it every day. And what the minority business, we have a whole file, because when that study was done, BBC went and bought, from down in Bradstreet, something called Marketplace, to tell you what the businesses are in your area. And most of those people that are African-American, black, and then I get Mexicans and others come to warn the systems. And I have about 30 pages of contractors that we have maintained. So, the capacity is not diminished, where people have basically lost hope, and that when the office was closed, they didn't see anything out there that would support or help them. To, to do what the federal government tried to do with the DB program to level the playing field, because when it comes to African-American business, they're always upside down. They're either undercapitalized, poor management, no management, no accounting records, and nothing to buttress what they're trying to do. So, that, that's one reason for the Entrepreneurial Academy. But no, it, the capacity's not been, not diminished. It's a lack of opportunity, because the county, just like the other former members of consortium, they, they do something called lip service. What, what they do is, they say, we encourage minority business. Encouraged is just like saying, going to Jesus and saying, Jesus tell you to have faith. If you don't do anything else, nothing's going to happen. That's what Chuck Shattle of Georgia Tech was saying. He said, William, there are no requirements in this program to make anybody do anything. So, we could do all of that if the will was there. And if just was not there in 2010, and that's why we brought it back up, that it needs to, needs to continue. I deal with them every day, so I know it's there. I know it's there. People are calling and saying, they don't understand what they need to do to qualify for the paycheck program. They don't understand the regimen about the Schedule C, where you can use either line 7 or line 31. And, and, and they are asking for help. So, what we do is, we create a file on that business. And we hope to contain, the Entrepreneurial Academy will do just that. So, it will be out there as a buttress. The Entrepreneur New Academy will do just that, so it will be out there as a butcher, a liaison, if you will, to help keep things on even keel. The capacity is there, it, it's just, they do not see any, let me underscore this, they do not see, I'm talking about the load, the disadvantage, they don't see a roadway to fairness when they come. So, that's why you do not see them as you would have, because the only thing the county does, which is a joke, say, we encourage minority business. You can encourage me to go to the moon. You can encourage me to, William, get you a Cadillac, and, and I'd like to have a Cadillac, let me say that. But if I don't do anything to get to that Cadillac, it's unlikely I'm gonna get one. I, I had a preacher tell me the other day, he said, William, you have faith? And I said, yeah. He said, well, you're crazy if you believe Jesus is gonna come down with that cross and help you.
All right, let's, let's move on. Thank you.
Any other question?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity again. Now, we're coming back in about, about a month with this update.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
All right, let's move on. Additional business. Consider for action the recommendation from the Emergency Medical Services Department to apply for an EMS trauma-related equipment reimbursement grant in the amount of eleven thousand thirty-one dollars and two cents for use to purchase EMS trauma-related equipment. This is a one-hundred percent grant with no local match. EMS Director Sam Allen will address. Good morning, Mr. Allen.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We were very fortunate this year, we've been hearing all year long that we were not gonna be getting any trauma grant money. All of a sudden, we got an email, said the funds are here, get your equipment orders in quickly. So, we would like to go for this grant if possible. This will help our trauma patients with much-needed equipment.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion in second, any discussion? They're being known, it's called a matter for a vote, those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action the use of the Darty County Nuisance Abatement Resolution Number twenty dash zero three four to address one purported dilapidated structure located at one twenty-four Lover's Lane. Mr. Lee?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a property located at a low-point road, one twenty-four low-point road, other house, let's look at, it's a long piece of property, it's about close to five hundred feet long, going to like work for low-point road. There is a house that's in good shape, only for, but there's another structure, another type of structure on, there are both schools, both at, and, and on property. Both houses certainly don't appear to be in any shape, to be rental base, and my understanding is from some of the correspondence, and going back and forth on email, and with Commissioner Wright and others, is that the neighbors have tried to work with the owners of the property out there in order to get them to either take it down or run it. Of course, again, I'm not a contractor, but the students like even run vehicles, they're awful, absolutely awful. So, what we done is, we put into a resolution, before the commission, and thought for a resolution, uh, we didn't play our nuisance abatement order, and it simply says, we're gonna send it over to code enforcement, that code enforcement will look at it, they don't go through a structural analysis of what it would take to bring it back up to code. And of course, if it can't be brought up to code economically in an unreasonable way, then I think the court will, it could order, and it's the demolished, and of course, the owner doesn't demolish it, then the, the resolution also says, this county will be able to station to demolish it ourselves and file a plea on the property. But with all we do this, it's back to, uh, code enforcement, that's my time to be able to get people through, just contact them and say, and they're in violation, to handle the matter. So, we'll be ready if that happens, to be able to go within, by legal action.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion in second, any discussion? They're being known, it's called a matter for a vote, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. McCoy?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Lee? Commissioner Edwards?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Gaines?
Nothing, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson?
Nothing further, sir.
Commissioner Jones?
As my good friend Lamar Hudges say, nothing, Mr. Chairman, thank you for asking.
Thank you. Commissioner Newsom?
Uh, nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Gray?
Uh, two things. One, I'm glad there was not any worse damage in, in Darty County after this weekend storms. I know there's plenty of it, and we relived a little bit of what we've had in the past, but I'm glad, yeah, no lives were, were lost in, in these particular storms. The second is, uh, Chairman, a couple, a couple of citizens have reached out with some frustrations trying to get returned phone calls from some of the courts, magistrate court in particular. A number of phone calls, left voicemails, have not received any type of callback, and personally, I think, you know, given the fact that our, our courts have had serious impacts due to COVID, but also with the, the disruption from the courthouse damage, I, I still think not returning a phone call to a citizen i- is pretty deplorable, and I, I think customer service should be able to continue whether or not they're, you know, in the building or not. We need to find some, some way to get a citizen served.
Mr. McCoy, can we find a way to relay this, this complaint to the magistrate court?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Anything else, Commissioner Gray?
No, that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much.